Gotta get turned each back out.
All right, I've got a thumbs up, so we will, we are officially online for our Facebook session, for the work session, which is in preparation for our Board of Alderman meeting, first meeting in October, which will be on Tuesday at 5:30 in City Hall downstairs. We have a couple of presentations today, and Mr. Burnett is going to manage both of them. One of them is a Civil Link proposal for street analysis, which is on our agenda for consideration on Tuesday night. It's something I'm really excited about. I know the engineering department is pretty excited about it, so I think that we have the folks online, or on the phone, who are a part of this, but Cody, I'll let you go ahead and take it away, please.
Sure, I'll kick this off when we've got different questions. This is a, what you have in front of you is a proposal from professional services. Civil Link Engineering, they're out of South Haven, and their specialty is roadway assessment, management, and preservation. So what they would do as part of the contract is they would physically draw up every street in the city, they video capture the entire network, and then about every 50 feet, they're making a rating of that street in time, so you get a really granular rating of all your street network. They do this based on what's called a Pacer scale, it's an empirical engineering scale for rating roadways, and all of the data they give us is GIS, the liberials, so you can put it on your street map, you can put it on your road map, and you can click on a street and see what the rating is, what was last overlaid, what was last created, so on and so forth. So once they make that first initial assessment, then they provide recommendations for every street type, based on condition, based on its age, those types of things.
Utilization?
Utilization, yes ma'am.
Okay.
And then all of this is, they provide it in a software, it's a proprietary software that is essentially an optimization. You can put in all of your network, your condition, and your budget, and they give you a listing of streets and treatment types that says, if you spend so much money this year, this is the best plan for your budget. And that doesn't mean that that's, you follow it to the T every time, there's, you know, extenuating circumstances, but it gives you an idea for planning on where your money's best spent. So that's generally the vision behind the professional services contract. The catalyst for this really was, one of the questions the engineering department's going to ask me is, if we mill and overlay every year, which is what we currently do, how much would you need to invest per year to just stay caught up, meaning that your roads are not deteriorating more quickly than your tree? And so if you run that out at a conceptual level, based on the prices that we're getting today, it really doesn't pencil out. You're somewhere in the bottom half of $60,000 per year of milling overlay just to stay caught up and not get more behind than the yard today. So it's a big investment. So that led us to a second question, which is, what are other communities doing that have a good roadway plan? They're not just in the black, they're the green, they're caught up, they're ahead of schedule, and so what we're finding is, there's really two things. One is they have a very robust roadway maintenance plan, that's number one, which is what we are being proposing this year. And the second thing is, is they're using multiple tools in addition to the overlay. So there's some 15, 20, 30 different things you can put on a road to make it last longer. Now, we wouldn't use all of those, but even if you had three, four, five additional tools in your toolbox, you really start to stretch that dollar, and you're not just saving money, you're also bringing up the quality of all your streets together. What we have done historically, what most communities do, is you overlay a street, and if you pray, you don't have to touch it again for 20 years, or until the complaints are so bad that you have to. And that's kind of what this chart shows. So you have your pavement condition on the left, and then as you go up to the right, that's years. So year zero, you overlay it, it's in rate condition, and at about year 15 and 20, it really starts to dip off. So the way you really want to treat streets is not the similar to owning a vehicle. You don't buy a car and then drive it until it explodes because you've never changed the oil. You make that initial investment, you change the oil, you rotate the tires, and that, those more improvements extend the life of your vehicle. That's really the same thing that you want to do for your roadway network. So once you've overlaid a street, there we go. Once you've overlaid a street, you really want to be back on it in five, six years with a very moderate treatment effort. This depends on the dollar compared to an overlay. You're back on it again in year 10, 12, with another moderate treatment. Year 20, you might do kind of a more medium treatment, and what you can do for a well-built road is effectively push that overlay out 30, 35 years into the future. That's where your call setting is, if you're playing that, and it's not an inferior product, you're just maintaining the road as you go instead of waiting for those claims. So that's the vision, and there's nothing wrong with an overlay. We will always overlay streets, it's time-tested, it's a good product, but it is one of the most expensive treatment options that there is, and so if that's the only tool that you have, and you get every street with the same tool, it's hard to ever catch up on the issue. So that's where we start exploring some of these options. So, did you see on this chart, this is the same chart we split that, but you add that moderate improvement, it announces your life back up every time. So, to start on this, the first thing you really need is that initial assessment in time, that says, this is where we are, this is how far we are behind, and this is the plan and the number. That's what Civil Link has been applying this contract. Then all the engineering department can take that data, maintain it in-house, and in perpetuity update that plan, and do it ourselves. And as time goes on, we rebuy, rebuys, and kind of, you know, change our bet this, but we get a well-built machine in a few years that says, we've been on this road in 10 years, and this is why, this is what we're going to do. So that's the vision, is to have a really robust maintenance plan, so we're not getting behind. I think at some point you have to do this, because every year you lose a little more street life, a little more street life, you want that to, on the rent, you can't catch up. So we're going to get ahead of it now, start thinking about it now, and if we have the luxury of easily ending this, instead of just doing it all at once. So, that's the plan, that's the vision, and that's really what I've got my first technical questions for you to have, Mr. Stafford.
Well, it's not technical for me, it is more of a, it's more of a data capture that I think we have done for utilities, and now I see us doing it for this, so that we can make those decisions based on actual data, and I think this is just an extraordinary way for us to do that, and I'm really glad. There are a couple of cities, Pontotok has done this, Hattiesburg has done this, I think there's one down the coast.
Rankin County is a very good maintenance program.
Rankin County, okay. And they have used, they've used these folks to capture that data, and that, I think, is step number one, and I'm really excited about this, as an opportunity for us, again, to follow that same path of, we capture data, we respond based on, on good, hard facts. And I think, at some point in the future, there's also another opportunity out there for us to get littler information from GTPDD, but that's a much more expensive thing, and we're going to look at that later on, once we get this established and understand where we are currently, so.
And I would say this will be an early process for us, this is new, so if we try something like, hey, that didn't work, I would encourage everybody to have some patience as we work through it. I think in five years, we're going to have a much better view of what works for us. So it does take some time to kind of get to the mark.
Yeah, but I do think it's a, it's a, it's a good start for us. Again, I liken it to our utilities program of capturing data on where we are for maintenance and that sort of thing, and then moving it forward on that level, so. Any questions of, yes sir.
So how would you anticipate, number one, what'd we spend on overlaying this year?
We spent, I think we budgeted about four and a half, and unfortunately that was utilities when we partnered with them to do the downtown trenching. We were a little under budget this year, believe it or not, all of the savings that we spent about $4 billion, is that right, once we, once we finish, how about $4 billion this year?
$4.1.
And that's using some of the internet source types.
Bonded.
So how would, do you have any idea how you would fund this proportionally versus maintenance versus overlaying, how that would impact what we're overlaying?
I, I, what we wanted to probably is fund one product, it's a decent unit, and try like, maybe first year, and see how it goes, if we love it, it's working good, we try something else the next year, and I don't see having a dozen contracts for different types of work each year. I think we get three or four things that work well, and the data from this will tell us how low or different, it gives you a real time, you're this far behind, you're caught up this much this year, or you lost this much light this year.
And this will be interactive, so citizens could see this as well, get a sense of...
They would be able to see data such as, what the, what the rating of the roadway is, when it was last overlaid, or whatever treatment that it had.
What I foresee in terms of financing is to do some on a pay-as-you-go basis with the monies that we've committed to streets, and issuing another set of bonds, because we're going to need big chunks of money at some points in time. What we've tried to do with these last street bonds, and with any future street bonds, is to issue them for as short a time period as possible, so that they're rolling off on the regular, and you can put that money back toward other streets.
Okay, cool. Any questions of the Civil Link folks who are on the line? They're the more, they're the technical, and they have, they made a presentation of what they could do, and the kind of things that they can feed into this program or this app, that then lets us, tells us how much we want to spend based on whatever asphalt costs this year, and that sort of thing, based on our priorities. So we get, get that for three years, as I understand the, the plan with this, with an option to renew it.
If we love it, I would encourage you to do it.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all right, no questions of them? All right, well, we'll let them get off the line then. Thank you guys, we appreciate you making yourselves available.
No problem, thank y'all for having us, we're looking forward to it.
All righty, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have Kevin Stafford, who's going to provide us some information on the, what they're finding out, or what they're making, I don't know how deeply y'all have gotten into it yet, not very deep? Okay, well, give us an update, just give us an update then.
I'll kick this off, yes. So, we've all talked about Old Mayhew a little bit, I think everyone is aware of the condition of the roadway. We would love to do some construction over there next year, and try to make that better. So there's really two, two parts of the project. The first is the reclamation of the existing roadway, it would be a full dev reclamation, or building it, so that's the, that's the first step. The second step is regarding the intersection of East Lee and Old Mayhew. If you've been on that intersection, it's pretty dangerous, it's a very severe skew and high speeds, and so it's dangerous for vehicles, there's no pedestrian accommodations, there's no bike accommodations. And so what I'd ask Kevin in this thing to do is give us a couple of conceptual plans that really could be done to fix this, as well as high-level estimates. The intent here, there's no action I don't want to put this, the intent is to award you the options that we can realistically make a plan to do more, and once we have an idea, Kevin, is to take off. We did want to cut loose, do a full design, a couple more, and what we're doing, how much it's going to cost, and what the issue is. So once we've heard this presentation, at the next meeting, we'll make recommendations of keep this option and receive a design. So that's the overview.
All right, so, obviously the reclamation piece, we're not looking at right now, what y'all have asked us to do is to look, to try to make the intersection of Old Mayhew and East Lee safer. Y'all know right now it comes in at a bad skew, it's a one-way stop, you're looking basically over your shoulder to try to get on, a lot of people speeding up and down leave, if you're like me, I was speeding as a cut-thru on Old Mayhew as well. So, with that, of course, you see three roundabouts to start with, that's probably a terrible way to start, right?
I knew you were so excited about picking three.
But with that said, we're actually looking at about nine different options right now, but I do this right now to set, when I say option one, two, and three, right now we're looking at three locations, as a matter of fact, one of them, option two, I'm probably going to take off the table today. But with that, we're looking at a combination of both the T intersection, which we'll talk about here in a minute, the roundabout options, and there's a bunch of different types of roundabouts I'll get into in a minute as well. We're only about 30% of the way there right now, I normally would not present today, but because y'all will be here for another month, we'll be well done by then, so we decided to go ahead today and kind of show you where we are. Show you some costs too, and I don't want you to let it get out of the bottle, it's hard to put it back in, but I'll give you an idea, just to kind of, just kind of scale of what each cost as we go through. So, first off, I'll start really with the, the roundabout option. So, these are full roundabouts that will actually take any bus that comes through, talking with Jeremiah and his crew, they wouldn't have to get off the pavement, if you wanted to accommodate an 18-wheeler, you could put a truck apron on the interior loop, this is something you could do, decorative on the inside of it, but what you see here is, the white lines are the right-of-way, and you see you're going to get in the right-of-way with those larger roundabouts, and again, I'm going to talk about the mini roundabouts a lot, that's probably more advantageous for you, as we look at it in different options. But one option is to try to fit it into the current alignment, and the roundabout's going to do two things, it's going to slow traffic down in all directions, but then here also it makes that skew a little safer that you're coming into. And so, moving it back and bringing it down a little bit, there is a large AT&T bank of information of right here, and that's going to be expensive to do, that's why I'm going to take option two off the table. So, and with that said, this last one is, if you're coming around the curve at Old Mayhew, this actually just aligns a little bit safer here, and then from the bottom here, this is just a road profile of East Lee. What, all I'm trying to tell you here is that really there's no great, great issue there from a site distance standpoint, so no matter where you put it, along the spread, you're going to be okay from a speed and a safety, negotiating the intersection, whether you can keep a, a, a one-way stop, a T intersection, or whether you go down. What you have in your hand here is going to be a little bit more information, I didn't want to go too deep into the roundabouts yet, but what you'll see is for each one, and if you want to, just flip with me real quick, and I'm going to leave this up here. We've got each one, I like to leave this here for comparison as we go through real quick. The first one you see, obviously, is just option number one, that's at the same, with the full roundabout, same location we currently are, this is going to be your least expensive to do, I'm going to get into the cost here in a minute as well. But the biggest thing for this that we don't like are these driveways. So, these driveways in a roundabout, bringing them in and out is really, really unsafe, and so for that reason, we really don't like this option. The only thing I think we're going to look at while we're considering this, is maybe the mini roundabout, which will shrink that a little bit, may give you more room separation from those driveways, and I still don't think we're going to be happy with it from a safety perspective, so I don't like that option. I've talked about option two, which is on your next page, it's obviously a little more costly, but the one thing I want to point out to you, you'll see on the slide here in a minute, that option two and three both have, once you move your intersection from here down this way, you've all of a sudden isolated these homes, you have to accommodate them, be able to get in and out as well. You'll see a cul-de-sac will create, which will separate the two roads, and obviously also make this a nice alignment end for them. So, with that said, in the future, and one of the things we'll be adding as we go through, again, we're 30% of the way, we'll be adding bike lanes and sidewalks as well, that, making this a dead end will help that connection to get over to Old Mayhew, which is a long-term goal for y'all as well, it's something that we're looking at with the Old Mayhew rehab. And then option three, and of course, as you can imagine, as you move to the, to the right of the page here, it gets more expensive, or the option you go with. So, you can even tell option three is a little bit smaller of a roundabout. The other thing I mentioned on these two is we're tying in Lakewood on two different sides, that's kind of why we chose those locations, we were looking at, see if it made sense to tie that in. This option gets completely away from it, and again, it's your safest realignment, but it's also your most costly realignment. So, so with that, option three is going to be, if you flip over in your pages, the last piece, you'll see the cul-de-sac there, again, your most expensive beginning station, so.
Why is it the most expensive, Kevin?
Well, because you have to lead in roads, you have to rebuild, so.
Okay.
This is about a $450,000, $500,000 road, you have to realign, but we'll get into it. So, the roundabouts all themselves, you're going to call it, go around, 1.5, 1.4, Daniel was looking at, so they're really expensive, to say the least, the mini roundabout's going to save you about $400,000 a piece.
Does that mean it's if you take property that you straighten, straighten it out?
Yes, it is. So, so all this property, we verified as fair game, to run it through if you want.
Do they have to sell us that property, do they give us a property?
That's a good question.
I understand what I'm saying, I don't know, can they, could they, Bert, what do you, what?
I don't know.
I mean, in the best interest of both parties, I don't know, but. What's the distance on that one, if you start straightening that, what's that distance across?
About 1.1 miles, so a little over 500 feet. As far as that goes, these spacings from the existing, this is about 250 feet down, this is about 600 feet down from the existing, that's how far we're moving this intersection.
Is your cost, is your cost include acquisition right-of-way?
No, 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 it's not, strictly just.
Is it strictly building a road up to it?
Yes, sir. It includes on all of them, the road and the roundabout themselves. Right now, we're including the full roundabout, and then next slide here, you'll see, just for spatial purposes, again, you see even the smaller roundabout here is still bumping the edges of the right-of-way that you had, and so, in an effort to try to avoid any right-of-way costs, we're putting it in there. Yeah, that's what option three looks like with the mini roundabout. So, the difference of a full roundabout and a mini roundabout is the circle in the middle is mounted full by all the traffic. Foot drivers, hogs mount that to drive over, it's just like a small speed home at the end of the day. So, so while you're maneuvering through is not wise, a roundabout is still going to slow you down about 20 miles an hour. So, you still have the slowdown effect, it just, in this case, it's going to fit within y'all's footprint a whole lot better. And then again, this roundabout will cost you about $400,000 less than the other person, so.
This one?
Yes.
Number three?
Number three, yes. So, on number three, as you move down, I said, you have a little bit of money as well that you have to reconsideration, so, and like, down here, for instance, well, I guess that's very good, I should, it's all in my chart, so. Obviously, here, this is the cheapest of all the roundabouts that we talked about, obviously it's not the full size, it can be mounted, but you don't have the driveway impacts that we talked about, that would be an option four. So, I think from a safety standpoint, this is the safest option, but it also, again, it's your most expensive, but as you went down, you said about $400,000 for a roundabout. So, the next slide, just look simply at the T intersection, this is kind of, if you just absolutely don't like the current skew, and you want to make it safer, you keep the same alignments, again, this is, I'm going to say, a no-go because if you do a relocation apartment, you still would have the cul-de-sac at the end when you cut this off. So, this obviously is a much safer approach, it's a lot easier to negotiate the intersection, again, I want to talk about the profile, lack of a profile issue along the roadway, so, you still have the roadway costs, but like I mentioned a minute ago, it's about a $10,000 cost to build that road.
Does that include creating the cul-de-sac, because we'd have to do that as well?
Correct, and that creates a cul-de-sac as well, so. And again, I just want to show all three kind of spaced on the same slide, so, next slide actually gets into the cost. So, if you remember, if you wanted to flip back to the beginning of what you have in your hand, where you see all three roundabouts on the same page, 1.6 at the current location with the larger roundabout, and then you can see I was kind of putting gray option two, I'm just kind of, I'll put it there, as you can see, about, I think, at the end of the day, you can see the difference between a T intersection and a roundabout, the cost there is drastically different, so, in this case, it's about, what, 1.4, 1.3. And then, option three, where I think it's the safest location, you have all three, you have the full roundabout, the mini roundabout, the T intersection, again, you can see the drastic difference in the cost, it's about a million dollars difference between a T intersection and a mini roundabout.
Is this the kind of thing that would be eligible for a tap grant?
Absolutely. So, tap grants, because of the traffic safety issue, you would add, if you had a bike and also you're slowing traffic down, it would fall out of safety, so you'd use a tap. I know as long as the line would be, the Harvies was all tapped, so.
And, and does, your numbers don't yet include the sidewalk in the, in the...
They don't, but I would say if they add 10%, I would be surprised on a grand scheme of things.
So that paid for 100% that roundabout on Main Street in Florence?
Yes, sir. Oh, 820, but.
I was going to say, wait a minute, that's an 820 thing, isn't it?
Oxford's done this around their campus, around that issue, and they're using, I think, the mini roundabout, I don't know what they, yeah, they're using the small round, they have one of the larger ones, but I think most of these that come in from like, what's that road comes in, Taylor Road?
Yes, sir.
And then the one that comes off on Highway 8, or further north on the bypass stuff, those are the smaller style, or those are, see if Oxford, I guess they probably utilize the tap grants.
We actually designed most of all of them.
Did, you say you're familiar, was that tap grant money? Where was that money coming from on that, that was tap grant?
I, I personally was not involved, so I don't know, but.
Did y'all design it, yeah?
Yes, sir. So, the, so all that said, again, our intent, first off, you saw a bunch of line work today, we're going to put a pretty big to do, we're going to put like, tile, and what, the purpose of the day, Cody asked me to just come and show you, this, this is what we're looking to try to do, come out with a recommendation, really at that point it becomes a budgetary consideration, right? Do we stay where we are in the same location with the T intersection, which we'll keep, we'll probably spend $100,000, $200,000 at the current intersection to try to make some safety improvements, obviously tie in, pad, and bike, and move on. There's not a true traffic congestion issue there, and always stop, from your original plan, to not recommend it there, because that would actually hurt the healthy, so the, the one-way stop is still the way to go over the T intersection. So, at this point, you're just realigning for safety and adding the combination for other modes of transportation.
But the, the roundabouts, both the mini roundabout and the full roundabout, help with speed on Old Mayhew?
Hundred percent.
Which the T intersection wants?
Well, speed on East Lee?
East Lee, yeah.
Correct, that's one of the things we noticed in a regional transportation plan, that was a recommendation actually came out of, was to look at a roundabout in this location to slow traffic down, so. And you know, the only, the only reason you do the big roundabout here, in this case, is also a welcome to campus, right, a welcome to the city, if that matters, since y'all live down next to some of these, if you have that opportunity in the middle, if you want to take advantage of that.
Mr. Stafford, is that, that mini roundabout, will it accommodate a tractor, tractor trailer?
Yes, anything you can go over, they like to tell you, downtown Columbus, Apex runs a all-air truck.
Right through that thing, and that's a mini roundabout?
Yes, sir. So it's built, it's all, it's over a foot thick in concrete, and so.
But the, I mean, the rate, I mean, the raise, well, kind of, the truck's only probably around it.
They, they go straight through it.
Or if they don't, they go right over the curb, or they...
They probably go through it, so. I've actually seen an 18-wheeler coming in, do a complete 180, turn around, and come back out of town too, and then run it back, so it will kind of make that.
That doesn't make you a welcoming kind of thing, that you slow, that just slows the traffic.
You're going to be in the intersection.
Yeah. When you come back to us next, you're going to have better numbers, and...
We'll complete, picture the better numbers, some of these, like option two, we'll take off the board.
Okay, and this...
We're working with y'all's engineering department, we've actually already done one iteration with them, we've got some feedback, this is probably the first time you've seen this in full, for that matter, so, we'll be...
Okay, this does, it still doesn't include a full reclamation of Old Mayhew Road, right? This is just the, just the intersection and the treatment of that?
We have a partnership that has, but.
I'm sorry?
The engineering department has an estimate more or less for that.
Okay.
That's a lot easier for a lot of them.
Okay. Just making sure that when we get ready to put this whole pretty picture together, what we're looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, one of the options we consider is, I think, option risk, or option, that's what we're looking for, we could design this as a full design on it, but we could, if you have the intersection, come back and install the roundabout every time.
Yeah, if we could get tap money, then that'd be great.
You say build road first, I'm sorry, wait.
Um, Sister, go ahead.
He can answer, he can ask this question.
Oh, you say build a, rebuild base, build, build Old Mayhew Road first, while you're flying the tap grant and come into the roundabout, but that would be phase one, phase two of that old road from, from East Lee Boulevard to how we want it to? Is that, that's how you propose, structure that, I'm sorry?
Commerce, Sister.
What's the timeframe on a tap grant application and hearing back on a tap grant?
We just applied for the next phase of Spring Street, work through that, that finishes, what we're doing this year, the intersection of Hollywood and Spring, this is the continuation of that, so that would be a slip-up for next this few years, and we'd be looking at applying if this was the choice in August of 25.
I was talking to the flea director last week, and he says that y'all should hear back on all your applications in early next year, January, he says probably get on these current situations.
That'd give us plenty of time to plan for it, and perhaps partner with MSU, since it certainly impacts them as it relates to East Lee and their interests.
Well, we actually are starting, other than the folks we met last week, we're looking to redo East Lee from Wingo Way all the way south to the YMCA, so we're going to repurpose that street, because, as you know, the front of the post office is a little odd right now, and so we're going to try to redo all that area, again, accommodate that bike and parking Again, accommodate that bike and parking and all the things that have to go along with campus. And so, we're going to extend that all the way to just north of, I'm concerned with the pavement changes, uh, basically, we also make this takes over on Wingo Way. I talked to Cody about, there's about twenty-four hundred feet between where we stop and where this gets up. And so, that section is going to be pretty consistent, probably access and travel will be the biggest thing to consider there. We can't hide from that while we're doing a book booking, right, what that looks like in twenty, so we'll be following on that as well.
Okay. Big plans for some serious improvements, that'd be great. Any other questions of Mr. Stafford while we have him?
Um, Mr. Bernard and Mr. Stafford, do we have any, um, tap grants that we're in the middle of right now, that we've applied for, that we utilize? Did you say Springs, what?
Yes, sir. We, we received one last year, we're just, uh, making a combination for A and B, it's Spring Street and Highway Twelve.
Right.
So we're getting that intersection drawn up, ready to go this year. We've just applied for the next phase of that, which would tie that in south to Locksley and north to Russell. So you're continuing to.
Do you have to complete a tap grant for we can apply from the old tap grant? Do we know, is this have to be complete before we can apply for the tap grant?
You have to be through the.
It has to be, be through the PSNE project, so like, right now, we have one that will be going under construction, and we've got another one applied for, so pretty much the next one, if we do, we have to have that one through the design phase, and then you'd be able to apply.
So y'all thinking of, uh, application for that would be in twenty-five, or would just?
It would, it would be, it would be a tight timeline, because if we're getting awarded in the first of twenty-four, um, then you have to kind of get that time put pretty quick. I think it's possible, but we just have to, they don't type up, we'll type up, so.
And nothing, nothing that we do, if we were to simply take this option three and turn it into a T, we, it doesn't preclude us from at some point in the future coming back and making sure we could do a, a roundabout, so we could conceivably do this in, in a phased approach.
A million dollar difference.
Yeah.
If you want to do that A and L, and then come back there. Of course, we would buy off a tap, you didn't know about.
Right.
But you're still saying that, you wouldn't, that, that, if that road sign was not, you wouldn't put any stop signs on?
On East Lee.
On East Lee, but you still, it'd just be a ninety degree, we'd be, we'd be up see that.
Yeah, see better to go get the intersection safer, obviously. Unfortunately, the M D T C D says stop signs can't be used for future use, so.
Oh, we do.
I write many a letter, make recommendations on reasons to put them up aside.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much for being here, appreciate it. Thank you, Cody. Appreciate it. All right, we have, uh, we have a fairly light agenda, uh, ladies and gentlemen. It is, um, mostly stuff that is typical, you know, department stuff.
May I bring something up before we start on this agenda?
Sure.
Um, on our emergency alert system that we've, we've enacted, I think it's incumbent on us as a city to put weather alerts, and weather alerts to this, this, this stop alert system. Um, we are, for the twenty-six, seven thousand people that live in City Starville, we are their local government. And I know the city, the county has a code, code red alert, and I'm sorry, I pay my county taxes every year, I know what Super Drive buys us, but, you know, I know a few things about that, but when the rubber meets the road, and where local government services are provided, where what I consider to be my city government are the ones that provide me with water, and sewer, and electricity, and picking my garbage, and, and protecting my home, police and fire protection for my home and my personal safety and stuff. I think that people that have this system, that, that look for this are going to look for us to provide, oh, the NOAA first alert, weather alerts. I noticed that originally Mississippi, who I know that we probably looked at, because they use the same civic alert stuff, they have weather alerts. You can choose that as one of your options. You can choose within that whether you want to get tornadoes, a windstorm, or how, you can pick, you can custom pick that, but, uh, you can get weather alerts on that. As I understand, there's three thousand dollars, there's a, the difference between eight thousand, eleven thousand dollars a year is the difference between us being able to put the weather alert on there as an option for our citizens. I think that's, look, we spend more on that on coffee and filters, you know, coffee machines at City Starville. Uh, I think that's, that's just an instant, insignificant amount of money for us, for something that could mean the life and safety of our citizens, for them to be able to get a, a text or an email from our, the stop alert system. I don't know why we didn't plan in on the front end on this thing to begin with. Um, but that, that's something. And by the way, I get maroon alerts because I'm a retired Mississippi State employee. And if you're current, if you're current faculty of staff, or you're an MSU student, or if you're retired faculty of staff, you get a maroon alert, they don't, you don't ever leave your system. But if you're not, the other twenty-five thousand people at City Starville are not getting the maroon alert. And, uh, this was, at I, at Hope, when we started talking about, was something that would provide our citizens, when the power goes off and you can't watch CBI, WCI's weather alerts and stuff on TV, power's off in your house, the one thing you're going to know about an, a bearing down, an impending tornado, a we, a weather event or something, in, in the City Starville particularly, and your portage is going to be a text that you get from, would get from stop alerts that tells you to take shelter or whatever, that kind of thing, just like the people, just like, as retired MSU employee, I get the maroon alerts. And so I think that's very important, if it were perjudiced expensive to be one thing, it's three thousand dollars a year. And I, I think it's something we should add, just right now, we should add that, that, that option. Um, this, and, and let people pick it if they want, if they don't want it. But I, I would think that people in City Starville, who consider Starville their local government first, and depend on City Starville for, for services, would expect, you know, in an emergency alert system, or stop alerts, for us to have the weather option where they would be notified in the event of a weather emergency. And I just, I just.
Well, let me, let me say, the reason we didn't do it is because we have a very robust nine-one-one emergency system, and I think Kristin Campanella has done extraordinary job on it. And I thought that she's got more substance to hers, and ours is new, so I thought that, that probably most of the citizens get that report from, uh, our nine-one-one system. I don't know what their alert numbers are, but I will find out how much, how many people they've got on theirs, because we've only got, how many we got right now?
We've got a hundred and sixty, so far on the first week.
I mean, well, it's brand new, we just wrote.
No, I understand, I'm saying that, but, but if Kristin's got, you know, twenty thousand on hers.
Well, I'm just saying, if this overlapped for three thousand dollars a year, why don't we overlap? Where if somebody wants to sign up for this, they get a weather alert from us, why would we deny city, people in City Starville access to stop alerts, weather alerts and stop alerts for three thousand dollars a year?
I didn't think we were denying, denying anything.
I mean, that's just, you know, we spent a lot of money, and that's not, in the grand scheme of things, that's not a lot of money.
It is not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. I certainly do not disagree, I just didn't want to be duplicative about it, and particularly since it was, um, one thing that I thought was already taken care of by the county, who we also pay taxes to.
I'm, I'm fully, I'm fully aware that I pay tax accountable. When I think about my local government, I'm sorry, I'll tell you about County, I don't think about, I'll tell you about County, I think about City Starville.
Okay, well, let me.
I believe in City, Memphis and Starville, I think that most people consider us their first line, their, their, their local government. And they're going to, they would expect us, and I know originally, Mass and County doesn't have an alert system, they don't. But, so originally, and Mass and all of them probably have done that to fill in that gap and stuff, but there's a lot of people in Mass and County, you know, that probably would like to have that, and I don't think they'd sign up for it, and I bet they can't. But, uh, but this is something, if it were fifty thousand dollars a year, or something like that, it'd be one thing, but three thousand dollars a year for us to add that on, to, really the first thing that people get picked is whether they want emergency alerts, because when the power goes off, all you, all you got between you and, and something you don't know about bad about to happen is a text or an email on your, on your cell phone. And that's, that's a simple thing for us to do. We already set up for it, civic alert can add, uh, Joel, civic alert can add that to our.
Yes, sir, that's very nice.
Do we have any, any obligation associated with that? They just add it, and it feeds to us from where?
That's right, it's just the NOAA feed. So it's the, it's geolocated, of course, and whatever NOAA alerts pop up for this area would be fed straight through the system.
Okay, all right. Alma, Sister Trent.
One, one thing, one thing that concerns me about, about an alert system of any sort is that, um, if you push too much information out to people, they, they quit paying attention to it. And so, if, if this, if they're opting into the city, um, weather alerts can at that same time opt out of the county, I don't have any.
They don't have to, they can keep it, but it, but this is what originally gets right, that's what originally gets. And, um, and you pick, you pick, you can pick, you can pick little of it, or you can pick all of it.
Right. And what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, when, when I start getting five weather alerts in five minutes, I quit paying attention at some point, um, whether it's weather or uh, power outages or whatever. And, and I'm, I'm not atypical there, people do, you get on information overload and you just quit paying as much attention as you should. So I, I would just want to be sure that we're not being inundating people with information.
Let me find, does, does Kristin Campanella get her information from NOAA? Is, is that a, is that what they're pulling, theirs?
They have a law there, see it as well, so in other words, nobody has to initiate that out.
Okay.
It's the case, I'm not sure if it's from, directly from NOAA or another organization, but we just.
Okay. Let me, let's do a little research at least, and see what it is we're, we're talking about, because I don't disagree, it's not a, it's not a huge amount of money. Um, but if, you know, if she's got fifty thousand people that she's pushing to.
I didn't even know that, I didn't know, I know about code red. I've lived here eighteen years, I know about code red. And I bet a lot of people don't know about code red. And so, but I bet you they'll know about within time, with that website and that stuff, they're going to know about this stop alerts. And when they go to it, I think part of, when they see the word emergency, I think part of what they're going for from that is, we're going to give them, we're going to send them some type of alert if there's a tornado about to happen in North Starville, South Starville, something like that. And I, I don't know, I don't, you know, the, the, there's legal implications, I'm sure, from, you know, the system failing and there being a tornado and there being stuff out, you know, if, if we're doing good faith, making good faith to, to try to provide our citizens with, with, with alerts, if something were bad were about to happen, and to try to protect their lives and stuff, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's what you do. And then, the legal chips fall where they will, but I just think we ought to have that on our system as an option. Since we got all these other options now, we're going to add, you know, then we're going to, we're going to provide people with it, that NOAA weather alerts would be something that would just be the, I think the first thing we do for people, is give, is, uh, access to emergency alert, weather alerts. Um, so anyway, that's.
Okay, do you want to put that on the agenda as a, as a request, or you want to wait until the next agenda and do it?
Well, I mean, do we have to, do we have to have a resolution for, to add that?
Well, it's part, it is part of our budget, we, we approved the civic alert system, or the, is that what it's called? Yeah, the, the civic system that we've got now, so it would just be a matter of.
I mean, it gets into politics and it gets, it gets defeated because of something like, it's not, it shouldn't be. Something like this is, is trump change for us and it shouldn't be political. Um, and I mean, I don't know, but I, I hate to see this go down the line and think voted down for three thousand dollars a year.
I don't, I don't think it is, this is a pro forma thing, I'm suggesting that we[1441.37]